Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the February 8th, 2021 regular board meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, roll call, please. Excuse.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Thank you. Matt, would you like to introduce the fire exits, please?
Yes, our exits are in the back of the theater.
Hey, guys, I have one note about the mics. This is a live Zoom meeting, so you're on and broadcasting. If your mic is clipped to your mask, that's great. But keep it clipped on. We'll mute you if nothing's going on. And that allows us to make sure that you're at the right level so the outside world can hear you properly. So the mics are really critical that they stick with you and stay in that spot.
Is the mask better or do you just break underneath here?
Either one is good. We'll adjust for either one. And you'll hear in a couple of minutes, you'll hear that your volume come up a little bit as we sort of like sync up with you guys. All right, thanks.
Hi.
Hi.
Yep, you're on.
So we're going to do open to the public first. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? No, not yet. You're in the workshop. Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? You're next, Karen. There may be someone we just have to confirm. Sorry. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our first workshop, which is with Karen Smythe, who is seeking nomination for the Boses Board.
Good evening. My name is Karen Smythe, and I'm here to ask for your nomination for the Dutchess County Boses Board. I am a Dutchess County native, and my career is in business. I have a graduate degree in business administration. I worked in corporate marketing for a number of years. I then came to work for our family's business, CB Strain &amp; Son, which I believe did the HVAC and plumbing for this building. And I ended up running the business until we sold it in 2012 and to a larger firm named Dynamic Systems, which is the company that runs it today. I then was an executive director for a small nonprofit in Hyde Park. And in 2018 and 2020, most recently, I was a candidate for New York State Senate. And what I know from all of my experiences, education is crucially important to everything that we do to the health of our students, our families, our communities, our businesses. And Dutchess County Boses is an organization that is really of service to the 13 school boards and school districts in the county of Dutchess. My particular passion is career and technical training. I worked with extraordinarily gifted skilled tradespeople, and it's a really terrific career. And it does not require a college education. And for some kids, it's really the right thing to do, and it's a really great opportunity. What I have found is what education can do when done at its best is help all kids find their path to success. And it would be an honor for me to serve on the Dutchess County Boses Board. I see an opportunity to increase the communication between Dutchess County Boses and all of the school districts. And budget is always important, but it's even more important now. And Boses is the organization that can help you maximize the efficiency of every dollar you spend so that you can be doing the best, giving the best possible education to every student. And so I do humbly ask for your nomination to the Dutchess County Boses Board, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Karen. Are there any questions for Karen?
Not a question. So thank you for running the... So as you know, Beacon's school district's located in the southwest corner of the county, right? And Boses itself has a facility up in Soul Point Turnpike, which is a 40-minute ride up for our students. You know, we're also a district of diverse demographics. And while we like the opportunities that Boses offers, our students kind of have to choose between taking an elective and taking a class at Boses. So it's something that we've impressed upon the superintendent. Obviously, the pandemic has kind of derailed some of those conversations, but you know, it's something that I would like you to keep in mind because while I haven't analyzed the demographics of all the other component districts, if we happen to be the most diverse but also the most impacted, I think there's an equity issue there.
What is, having driven all over the county of Dutchess, I know how far it is from one spot to the next. And I think the pandemic has given us an opportunity to think about what are the possibilities that we hadn't thought of before. And I do think that there's some virtual, potentially some virtual programs that could be done. I certainly wouldn't want to speak for the current Boses, but I think, as you all know, the superintendent will be retiring in the end of August, and his deputy superintendent is retiring in July. And so we have an opportunity to engage a new superintendent and ask that question of how do we handle this situation? What can we do? How can we be creative about how we serve all of the students in the district? And that's one of the reasons why I'm not only here, but I'm physically here, because that's something that I want to bring to the Boses Board, is to physically show up and to hear these kinds of issues so that we can be addressing them as a strategy on the Boses Board. Because I completely understand you want your kids to be able to engage in both and maximize what they can do. And I have some ideas about how we might be able to address that question of location. And so I think that's our opportunity, is to ask those questions and see if we can't get creative about it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
It's great to hear from you.
Do you have something to zoom at Boses?
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Erin.
I wanted to... Hi, Darrell. My name is Erin Junta. I'm the president of the Sargent Elementary PTO, and I wanted to speak as part of the parent group time. So just wanted to...
Erin, you know what? Just as a point of order, I'm just going to make a motion for the board to move the parent comment to now, the parent groups to now. So you won't...
Okay, sorry, I was...
No, no.
Sorry.
I think that's fine. Is everyone okay with that?
So moved.
Yes.
So good.
Anthony moves to move the parent group comment to 2.01. And Craig seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Or sorry, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm in favor, passes eight to zero. Okay, sorry, Erin, go ahead.
My very own motion, thank you so much. Well, first of all, I just wanted to let the community and especially the Sargent community know PTO meeting is this Thursday, February 11th at 7:00 PM on Zoom. Details are on our webpage at sargentpto.org or our Facebook page. Wanted to give a public recognition to our recently resigned PTO board member, Anna Sullivan, who is our RANS writer and RANS coordinator, and to thank her very much for her many years of PTO service that she's given Sargent. Wanted to, on that note, let everybody know that we are open for anyone who's interested in serving on the PTO board in a position of a RANS writer or coordinator. So if you are interested, you can contact us at sergeantpto@gmail.com. So please get to us for more information. Also, we have, we're working on starting up again the Girls on the Run Running Club at Sargent, and we are waiting on just a few more things to get finalized on that. We will need some volunteer coaches. And we're also going to be starting up the Triton Running Club, which is geared towards boy identifying, male identifying kids and girls who run are identifying for girls. If you are interested in being a coach or signing up your child in either Girls on the Run or Triton, just reach into our Facebook page for more information about that. And just wanted to thank Leslie Canosey for her work on getting that running again. Right in the pun. Let's see. Also, I wanted to give a public shout out to Leslie Canosey, a parent at Sargent, and her fifth grade child, who came up with the idea to have the other fifth graders come up with a quote to share on the board that's along ID, our Sargent Board, where we make announcements about important dates. We usually do a quote on the back that the PTO board officers, you know, come up with. Leslie has recently started taking over the job of updating the sign, thank you very much. But then her idea was to maybe work with the fifth grade teachers and students to have them come up with a quote to include on the back. So our first quote is from the Ron James on the back of the board. So just drive by and see what it is. But thank you so much for that great initiative. We hope that this can continue on for other fifth grade classes in Sargent. Wanted to thank the parent volunteers who joined the building leadership team. Thank you for that. And in some of the work that we've been doing recently about researching our anti-racism commitment, we looked into Scholastic, and we found, our VP, Marie Guido, found that Scholastic offers a program called FACE Community Act, I'm sorry, Family and Community Engagement. So Scholastic will subsidize all books published, I'm sorry, purchased for student ownership through the FACE Literacy Initiative by up to 68% and provide free shipping or other incentives to buy books. And because we want to be giving some books away free to kids, this would fall under the FACE Family and Community Engagement Program. We did some, we applied to see if we could be included in this program. And it seems like the Beacon City School District or Sargent are not already in that program. So we applied to see, you know, what we need to do to get started on that. Wanted to encourage other schools, other PTOs, and maybe the BCSD to look into that as well, because it does provide wealth of resources about emotional and social health books and books about anti-racism and books just, you know, general literacy reading. So if you need more information about that, you can email FACE@scholastic.com. Another update is that we're working with our teachers and requesting for them to give us their some wishes that they'd like to see purchased. And then we're going to share that wish list on Amazon for the community to help purchase and get the teacher's wishes into their hands. So just a reminder to our teachers or any other parents, if there's anything awesome that you see, share with your teacher and then ask your teacher to share with the PTO so we can get that resource into their hands. And then the community members can then use smile.com and purchase the image of the books or whatever it is and can get a portion of that purchase can go back to the Sargent PTO as a donation from smile.com. And then last, I don't know if I said that. Don't forget to sign up for Block Stop for Education. They do it all digital now, so there's products and stores that you can just scan your receipt. And 10 cents from each product that's eligible goes to the Sargent PTO. So it's super easy. You can just also email your digital receipts from Target or Hanover's or ShopRite or Walmart, and Sargent can get credit for, you know, purchases that you might be making any day, every day. So all that adds up. We'd like to see if we can really increase our amount of donations that are made that way to us. And lastly, just a reminder to everybody in the community that Sargent has a community clothing drop-in located at the lower level of Sargent. You can drop off Huesack tiles, toys, clothing, fabric, anything that... And all that material will then be turned into pennies on the pound for us. And you get a check quarterly for between, let's say, $150 and $350 or so every quarter. So that really adds up. So if you have any donations, please consider dropping them off at the clothing at Target. That's it for me. Thank you so much for listening.
Thanks, Erin. That's a lot. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're trying to show our workshops. First up is John Giometta from our athletics department with his budget presentation.
Thank you for having me. This is new, but I do have some nice things to show regarding what we've been able to do in the COVID-19 crisis without further ado. Okay, so what I like to basically do with our budget presentations is go over the success of our programs and standout things that we have heard. And given the circumstances of our time, I'm proud to say that our boys soccer team was able to win the regional championship of Dutchess County. What the Section 1 Athletic Association did this year was to move the championships regionalized. We were lucky enough to be in Dutchess County. However, that being said, they allowed three AA schools to compete with us compared to our usual A lineup of schools. So being able to come out on top of one of these championships was a really special thing for our kids. Despite all the different things and protocols that we had to overcome, probably the biggest one was having to wear masks at all times during physical competition. It was quite an undertaking to go through. But like I suggested, and like I thought was going to happen, our students were able to overcome all these different protocols and were able to get out into the field and compete. And it was one of the most special parts of my career, being able to see these boys overcome and to achieve what they were able to do. And it's like for most of the teams that we have in our program that we're running this fall. So boys soccer was a scholar athlete team, meaning that the average GPA on the entire team was a 90%. And once again, regional champions. Girls soccer... Sorry, I gotta be using my clicker here. You can click the next slide. Girls soccer, once again, during the regional championship, was able to have a great upset against RCK, a double-A school. In addition, you'll see photographs here. We were able to do a social-distanced senior ceremony for each of our senior athletes, which was a really special thing to do. The parents were very excited to be able to have the opportunity to be out there with their kids and likewise the athletes. The girls soccer team was also a scholar athlete team, averaging a 90% and above. Next slide. Other updates, our girls tennis team had a successful season. And once again, our boys and girls cross-country team. All of our teams that we had this year during the Fall were scholar-athlete team. And the boys' cross-country team was able to win the league, the regional league championship that they were able to do this year. Next slide, please. So a layout and how things are going to look moving forward. I'm happy to say that this past week, we were able to start some of our higher-risk sports for the winter season, those being cheerleading, boys and girls basketball. Their season's going to be running to the end of March 14th. At this point, we do not have a schedule. However, we are anticipating to have this information by the end of the week. From there, we are actually going to be competing in Fall Season Two. I've never attended a football game in the middle of March before, but it's going to be an interesting one. That's what we'll be doing Friday Night Lights. We're going to be able to have as many spectators as the state is going to authorize us to have. So on March 8th, April 25th, we'll be having the sports of football, volleyball, cheerleading, and girls swimming. And then finally, our more traditional spring, which is pushed back to April 19th this year, will be softball, baseball, boys tennis, girls lax, boys and girls golf, and boys and girls spring track. Next slide, please. So getting things started, the Winter Season One, which started up January 4th, we're able to compete with boys swimming, boys and girls winter track, and boys and girls bowling. You'll see here that we have pictures from the bowling alley. I can tell you that it is nice and socially distanced, and they have barriers up and around. But at the end of the day, we have a lot of happy students that are competing at this point in time. Swim has been a little bit different. The section is offering virtual swim meets, so you're actually not traveling to other places to host the meets, but we are able to livestream these meets as they occur. And once again, we were able to have a very nice senior ceremony for our athletes. Thank you, Omar. Good swimmer. Just got caught up, sorry about that. So moving on to the budget. After talking with Amory Corderoni and discussing items, we decided to reduce a couple of the lines that we typically have under the athletic line, one being our equipment and the other being the school supplies that basically would be anywhere from buying baseballs, basketballs, things that were typically needed to run an actual season. So we are looking at a $10,000 deduction for the athletic code for the '21-'22 school year. So a couple other things, things that we are doing this year and things that we have done. I'm happy to say we have a couple of pictures of our newly painted and newly sealed gym floor here at the high school. Looks absolutely beautiful. If you do have a chance to check it out by how I suggest doing so, you'll probably see some kids practicing down there this evening. So other things we have done are senior parent recognition, which is really special for our senior athletes. The turf field flagpole project. We have a good 40, 50-foot flagpole that's out at the turf field. And I'm also happy to say that the old flag, our temporary flag, is hanging in my office at this point in time. That thing lasted through hurricanes and storms and rains, and I'm very proud to have that flag in my office. But we do have a large, fully lighted flagpole now at the turf. Via Jess Gym Floor Project that I spoke about earlier. The trophy case updates, I'm excited about that. There were a lot of trophies, plaques, and different pieces of Beacon history that weren't completely updated with things like team rosters, names of participants of those teams. So we were able to have them completely refurbished, and I'm awaiting those. And hopefully, in the next month, we'll be able to hang these up in our hallway so we can look at all the accomplishments of our past Beacon athletes. Other things that we are going to be doing, summer school PE and health credit recovery for our students here at Beacon High School. Our batting cage alteration projects that we have at the baseball and softball fields. Lighting around the building so we can host more evening games, such as football games. Our senior appreciation ceremonies, which we will continue to have for each of our teams. End of the year athletics award recognition. We are going to wait a little bit longer to see what type of protocols are lifted, to see what type of ceremony we'll be having. This past June, it was a great experience being able to meet up with the students and their families despite the restrictions, to be able to give them our awards. We used the Twitter platform to highly recognize our student athletes, and it was very well received. We are still planning our college athletics commitment ceremony for those students who are going to be competing at the collegiate level after Beacon High School. And the grandstand project at the turf field. I'm happy to say that the bleachers are constructed. The press box is installed, and we are awaiting the sound system, which we were hoping to have in by the next month. So things are moving on despite a lot of delays due to COVID. But ultimately, we're going to be able to give our kids a great experience. A few goals that we have, and of course, these have been a little bit altered and slowed down, you know, not by choice. However, crew, we still want to continue to explore crew considering our proximity to the Hudson River. Our unified sports teams, which is, provides opportunity for students with disabilities to compete in actual sports that we can host here in our gym. It runs just like a regular varsity sporting event, and it's used in collaboration with our current student athletes that are able to work with these students to provide a good, genuine athletic experience. Paint and resurface every gym floor in the district. Our competitive cheer team, which we want to continue to pursue to send our girls to competition. And finally, installing or being able to adopt a swim program for our students K through 8. We want to do this on a more consistent basis throughout the course of the school year and just not a few days at the end. Larry Collins and I, despite Larry retiring, are still talking about how we can structure this for each of the students at our elementary level to come up and use our Beacon Pool on a more regular basis. Other things that we're continuing to explore, our sixth-grade Project Adventure half-year curriculum, which includes the climbing on the low elements and going on the walls and doing all the fun stuff up in the rafters. We're still looking at how we can implement that into Robout. Of course, not being able to make contact with one another is a little bit difficult right now, but we're still exploring these options to see how we can implement it here. Our eighth-grade Project Adventure half-year curriculum, once again, utilizing the high elements, low elements, and the things in the park. Our secondary PE elective classes, giving more choice and opportunity for our students. Changing our curriculum to meet the needs of our student populations. For instance, an aquatics class, a weight training class, an indoor games class, trying to do different things to offer our students a little bit more variety. Elementary PE curriculum revision. The one thing I can say positive about COVID has been that our teachers have probably worked closer together via Zoom, of course, to look at our curriculum and what we are offering our students here at Beacon. Our message from the beginning was to be able to unify all of our curriculums and to provide each student in Beacon the same type of curriculum and same type of offerings, possibly at the same time during the school year. And then continuing to look at substitute PE teachers, a permanent sub-teacher. When one phys ed teacher calls out in the district and there isn't a phys ed certified person, many times those students aren't able to perform physical activity in class. So the hope is to have this permanent substitute PE teacher that can float throughout the district to fill in for phys ed teachers if they did have to call out. And then finally, five-year goals. Our weight room reconfiguration project. We are in need of updates in our weight room. Continuing to explore that area. And new is the tractor reconfiguration. Fortunately, the shelf life of our track that we have at Hammond Field is coming to an end, and we have to start to discuss options for what we want to do with resurfacing. The next goal is every student that graduates from Beacon High School will have been offered CPR and first aid certification. Unless restrictions do start to ease, we may be forced to offer this virtually to our students in a hybrid model as opposed to have them do chest compressions and whatnot on an actual mannequin in class. Number four, every student that graduates from Beacon High School will have a developed personal fitness plan. And number five, increased enrollment of BCSD students into interscholastic athletics. It is a goal of mine to have more student athletes out on the field and courts. Sports and athletics have certainly changed my life, and I want to encourage our students to participate in our interscholastic programs as much as possible. So that is my presentation for the 2021-22 school year. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
I want to start on the weight room reconfiguration. You've spoken on this before. Have you yet met with our new architect team?
I have not met with the new architect.
I'm sure that, you know, they'd be happy to talk with you about that because we're in the early days of doing that.
Absolutely.
Look see. Very happy to see you're looking at five-year goals and three-year goals and next-year goals. That's great. You update us every year on this, so they change a little bit. Now, are we making any progress? I realize that in the time of COVID, progress, it may not be our most important product. But we keep struggling. So could you give us any sense of some of these longer-term goals? Like, for example, the crew concept?
Correct.
Is there, that's the one that obviously involves a lot of other schools and facilities. What's that looking like?
So right now, just with the restrictions, most of these sports are fairly fresh to even happen at this point in time. And the state is not only restricting the amount of contests you can play, for instance, but they're trying to limit how many student athletes are gathered in one place at one time, just like normal restriction would be. So discussing the crew, for instance, with SPAC and Kill the Mergers that we were hoping to go through, it certainly isn't the radar. It's on hold for right now. But we will agree, and I think everybody's starting to see, that we need our student athletes doing a lot more and as much as we can. If we can provide safe opportunities to do so, we're going to keep pushing forward to do. There's been a lot of talk, and I'm sure you've seen things. Uh, there's been a lot of talk, uh, and I'm sure you've seen, seen things on social media about other states, uh, participating in certain athletics and them having success. Here in New York, it took a little longer for approval, uh, you know, which, you know, obviously we want to get things going sooner than later, but we're going to keep striving forward to, uh, offer these opportunities. Cheer is a big one. I think it would really be beneficial to our students to really compete competitively, go to a competitive meet as opposed to just being a sidelined cheerleader. I just think that it would really meet the needs of a lot of our athletes here. So to answer your question, sure, Craig, I'm sorry. We, we're going to try to do as much as we can and as soon as things are lifted, uh, we're going to keep pressing forward with these goals.
John, I just have a question about the schedule for the winter season two, the fall season two and the spring season. There seems to be a week overlap with, with them.
Yep.
And I know that, uh, athletes have to have a certain amount of practices before they could go in competition. Is there a plan that you have been working with the coaches and so forth that if they're playing a winter season two sport, but yet they're going to play a, a full season two sport, to ensure that they will be able to still get into practices even if they're in competition for that winter sport?
Yeah, there's a roll off, uh, excuse me, there's a rollover. So if a student is still competing in a sport and another one occurs, you can roll over three practices from that season. It's typically a six practice minimum, except for football, which is 10. Uh, we are also talking, uh, in the section about allowing athletes to be dual sport athletes. So technically a basketball player can also start practicing football in that week overlap to keep them from falling behind. Cause it definitely is a concern, Anthony, because the, uh, season's so limited and we're trying to pack in as many games in a short amount of time as possible. So those practice mandates are very important.
Other part, the other part is, is with the competition, I know they're not doing sectionals and so forth, but like, does this schedule include that, like county, uh, competition that may happen at the end of each season, or would that be a later week, or would that be within that timeframe?
So it's ultimately, it's being decided. I mean, for instance, basketball started last week. I right now don't have an assigned basketball schedule. I think the section is waiting to see how the season is unfolding and then they're deciding what type of, uh, finishing event that we're going to have with it. The event does need to occur in that timeline that's specified.
So the, so even like if they do like a playoff event, it would be within that timeline?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, and if you look at statistically, uh, you know, obviously our goal is to be in these playoffs as much as possible, but if you're not, uh, then you, your season basically stops short and then you're able to join the next season.
With the shorter timeframe of the sports being open, are they talking about, like, I know there's always been a rule that you can only practice or play six days out of the seven days. Like, is that still going to be true?
So for right now, they, they, we are able to get that waiver, the seven day waiver. We have it for basketball and cheerleading right now. They did not officially approve it for fall season two football and volleyball. The hope is that they will and, and they have, it just seems they're waiting about a week before approval is given to, to waive it.
Right, because I'm just looking at the fall season and then the spring season with it mostly being outdoor and then the, the rain piece comes into play.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's going to be interesting, but you know, we can do enough to just stay positive, keep scheduling as many things as we can right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Um, the BOSI services line item, what does that include?
So the BOSI services, that's how we basically pay for our, um, officials at events and other fees that would be going to, uh, section one athletics. So there's dues that we have to pay in order to participate in section one. And that's why it's a larger number, the officials fees they add up if you think about it.
Anthony, did you have a question?
Yes, uh, thank you, um, and congratulations to the success of a lot of the sports, uh, teams. Um, I know the, the boys soccer team made the news. I wish they all made the news. Um, I mean, I, I, you know, we should all be big fans of all our students who are practicing. So, um, first of all, congratulations on that success there.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, um, the one thing about the Hammond Fish, uh, not Hammond Fish, the Hammond Field, the, um, uh, the, um, so that property is a little different. I mean, it's owned by the city, but it's deeded for our use. So, um, you know, I'd like to actually look that, look into that even more, whether we s, you know, whether that becomes something that we want to continue to do or not. Um, I know we invested in the turf field and we wanted to make that multi-use. Um, and, um, so it's, uh, something to think about, um, whether it has to somehow go through some legal process to, to either give it to the city or give it to us or something. But I mean, it's kind of a strange arrangement and I'm not sure what the, what the long-term implications are for that.
Yep, certainly. It, it's definitely, and, uh, I kind of snuck this one on the slide without talking to Matt first of all, so. No, but it, it, it's certainly a conversation that we're going to start having. It's not going to be immediate thing that we need to do. That's why it's one of our five year goals. So we do have time to discuss and explore how we're going to, uh, get the project off the ground.
Yeah, and I love your five year goals. I mean, uh, the crew team, I'm pretty partial to, I think I said that last time.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there is a boat launch, uh, next to the slump club in, in Beacon that, uh, probably requires some repair. I think the, the latter half of that concrete ramp is, uh, is kind of fallen in a little bit. Um, I don't know what it would take to have a, um, a, a bo, a boathouse in Beacon. I know, uh, Mark Price is rearranging the park. Um, it may be something to, to talk to him about, to get in on the ground floor, what they're doing with that. Obviously everybody's budgets constrained, but, um, you know, I, I think, uh, um, like you said, we're in Beacon, we're next to the river, want to take advantage of that. I know those boat launches, another, another areas, but I would, I would like to see it in Beacon as well, if possible.
Yeah, and I think getting us started with the club with SPAC and Kill, I'm extremely new to crew. I don't know what, I've never done it and I've kind of seen it, but, uh, I think joining up at the club and then start to learn the process and then hopefully there's people that would be interested in developing, you know, exclusive program for us here in Beacon. That's kind of my goal is to just start to network and see how the sport is running.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I can tell you stories about the East Rivers.
Nice.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, John.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike Keely with the technology budget presentation.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Good to see everybody again. Um, I'll just wait for them to bring my slides up. Um, so the agenda for this evening for our technology department budget presentation is to just review our department and organization, um, talk a little bit about our year in review and, um, the tickets that we've been working on, um, speaking about hardware upgrades that we're anticipating, going over a bunch of budget figures, um, reviewing our budget graph, um, speaking a little bit about our anticipated BOSI's aid, and then I'll be taking some questions. Um, so last year when I, um, met with everybody, we talked about, um, and we really celebrated being one to one as a district. We had brought in a lot of new Chromebooks and equipment and we were able to, um, take some of the older equipment and put it down on the carts in the elementary schools. And little did we know that we would be relying on that equipment so much during this time. Um, so I want to start by saying that the department as a whole has, um, had to step up and respond to the changes of how technology's been used, uh, since the pandemic began, which has been substantially increased. And so when we look at the organizational overview, I can't, uh, say enough about my team. Um, we're a team, a small team, but we do a lot of work. Uh, we have two network specialists, um, and this year we added an information services specialist, um, in reaction to the sheer number of tickets, um, that we were seeing when school began, um, in regards to the pandemic. We were close in September and October to like a 200% increase in the number of tickets that were coming in as parents and students had questions about using their Chromebooks, um, engaging in Google meets and those sorts of things. Um, and while talking about the information services specialist role, I just want to take a moment to recognize Liz King, who worked in the district for over 20 years and just recently retired last week, um, but she was really wonderful in helping us as well. We have our audio video technician, Mike, you see him, uh, every two weeks here at the meetings, um, a data coordinator, and we didn't get to do it this year because of the pandemic, but we're hoping to continue what we started the year before and continue to have five, uh, student interns. We think it's a great experience for the students in the district to get a little work experience here, get to know the technology, get to work hands-on with the technology, um, and really expose them to what it's like to work in an IT, um, department or, or environment. And hopefully some of them will go on, take that experience to pursue a career, uh, in Um, so when we look at the year in review, uh, we look back the last two school years and you'll see these tickets begin to increase, um, which is to be expected. We introduced a lot of new equipment in the past, um, two years. Well, you'll see a significant jump this year, beginning on July first to just this past week. Um, we've actually surpassed all of the tickets that we had last year. Um, and that's to be expected given the pandemic. Um, we're handling questions of Chromebook connectivity at home. My Chromebook can't connect to the wifi, um, I'm having Google meet issues, um, I can't connect to a piece of software that my teacher is using, um, because Chromebooks, as you know, became the primary means of instruction delivery, um, since the pandemic began. We had a lot of Chromebooks that were cart-based and were used, um, occasionally throughout lessons throughout the day, but now we have students sitting in front of them all day. And so that's, uh, just par for the course, we're going to have more tickets. Um, but I just wanted to show you how we've progressed in the past two years. Um, look at the third year, you'll actually see that the building numbers are down because we have so many students working from home, working remotely now. So if you're looking at the numbers, you'll see that substantially the building based tickets are down since we don't have as many students, um, working in the buildings day to day. Um, next slide, please. Some of the major projects that we've worked on and we presented to you last year and that we've completed, um, was getting new Dell laptops for our teaching assistants. Um, we also installed new Dell VX rail servers, um, and that's really the backbone of our network. That's our file servers, our Power School Student Information System, all sorts of other programs are hosted on them. And so it was really timely that we got that done. Um, and we also did some AV upgrades to the BHS LGI room here in the high school. Um, and in the slide, you'll see, uh, the new, uh, theater screen, the projector, new interactive panel. Um, if you haven't been in there yet, we got new cameras that can, uh, voice activated, will follow people that are speaking. Um, and this was planned before the pandemic began, but it's really timely in the sense that it's a fully equipped video conferencing now. So we can actually host, um, either guest speakers or classes in there and we can actually broadcast them out. Um, so those are just some of the major projects that the department worked on in addition to just supporting, um, remote instruction throughout the pandemic. Next slide, please. Forward, please. Forward one more. Thank you. Back. Anticipated hardware upgrades. Um, so going into the next school year, um, some of the things that we're looking to do is to install more internet drops in about half of the district classrooms, and this is done to keep the budget down and we'll do the other half hopefully the following year. And these will be used to, um, start moving to an IP phone system away from the traditional copper lines, which are becoming increasingly obsolete, um, especially, um, to the copper lines coming into the buildings from Verizon, they're moving towards an IP infrastructure. Um, so we'll be looking to upgrade the phones in each individual classroom along with the connections. We want to upgrade the BHS auditorium AV recording equipment so that we can fully live stream, uh, from the auditorium, um, without getting the feedback from the sound. We can install switchers similar to what we did in the LGI this past year, um, where everything is integrated and, uh, we can present very, um, easily, uh, any sort of a presentation. And not, the benefits not just for board meetings or something related to pandemic. We had a guest presentation, um, a guest speaker, we will be able then to stream out to all of the district buildings, um, in a very nice way, once that's complete. We want to continue enhancing the RMS disaster recovery site we began a little bit this year. Um, we worked with our, our internet service provider, Crown Castle, to run a separate line into RMS, um, that just has a small internet connection right now, but can be upgraded, um, in the event of an emergency. Um, and that line was really important to get installed in the event that we have to spin up the servers over there. We hope we never have to do it, but if something happened here to our data center at the high school, that's our backup site. Um, our goal is to be fully operational in the sense that if there was an emergency, we could spin up those servers in about 48 hours, um, and run the district out of roundabout if we needed to. But we're not there yet. We still have work to do, um, some switching configurations, um, and setting up the servers there to do that. Um, but that's our goal. So we're going to continue enhancing that site this year. Our other goal is to purchase a thousand Chromebooks to replace the model elevens, Chromebook model elevens and thirty-one twenties. Um, model elevens were purchased in 2014. Um, model thirty-one twenties were purchased in 2015. And what we're seeing now that they're actually out in the field and not on carts anymore is that a lot of the, if the Chromebook of those two models are suffering from degraded battery, um, issues. Um, so we're getting tickets in all the time from students that are working either onsite or at home. Hey, my Chromebook's not holding the charge for the full day anymore. Um, and we've had to order more batteries to replace that, but really they're reaching the end of life. They're running, they're running out of Google support, meaning they aren't getting the software updates anymore. Um, so it'd be prudent of us to replace them, especially, um, not knowing how much longer we're going to have to continue with the remote learning model hopefully then soon, but at least then we'll be prepared. And of course, continuing to support the hotspot service for families in need. So we've, uh, purchased and issued hotspots to any family that's came forward to say that they, um, don't have an internet connection at home, um, to make sure that they are connected and that they can get, uh, connected with their teacher, their classmates, and receive the instruction that they so desperately need. Um, and so we want to make sure everybody's connected, um, and we want to continue to support that moving forward into the next school year. Next slide, please. Uh, so here's our, our budget, uh, spreadsheet essentially. You'll see that hardware is remaining flat. That's because most of our hardware, we run through, um, BOSI's, um, and that's the generate state aid. Um, if we look at contractual expenses, including E-rate, it's substantially less this year. That's because we're not planning any major E-rate projects. Um, last year was the last funding year for, um, the E-rate program, and then it renewed this year and the money's good for about five years moving forward. Um, so we're anticipating towards the back end of those five years, we'll be using that funding. Uh, our access points will need another upgrade at that point. Um, some of our switching and network infrastructure will also need upgrades and that's all E-rate eligible. Um, so we're not anticipating any category two major projects using E-rate this year. So we didn't have to budget the money to, uh, support those projects and then get reimbursed by the federal E-rate program. Um, obviously travel and professional development dropped. Um, we usually send a couple of employees to Power School University, which is our student information system, uh, to learn about the new features that are coming out, um, so that we can better utilize that system. And so there's no travel, obviously, to go to that. Uh, this year it's being done virtually, so we're able to, um, take the funding out of the travel and professional development line. Uh, supplies and materials is increasing because we're anticipating a thousand Chromebooks. We're going to need to buy cases to go along with that. Um, computer software, um, is down, um, because we were able to cut a program that we weren't fully utilizing, that was very seldomly used. Um, phones, we just talked a little bit about in the last slide, we're looking to upgrade the phones, so the phone line item is going up, uh, just a little bit. And the BOSI services is pretty much remaining flat. Uh, we continue to run as much software and hardware, um, through BOSI's. It's slightly down this year because, um, we're in a really good place. We purchased laptops when I first came on board a couple of years ago for teachers. We purchased laptops for the teaching assistants. We purchased laptops for offices and different parts of the buildings, uh, desktop PCs. Um, and so we don't have to purchase really too many new computers this year. We've done really well with that. Um, so that's down this year. We have, uh, salaries of the department and overall our budget, uh, is decreasing. And if you account for the E-rate reimbursements that we've gotten in the past and the BOSI's reimbursements, um, we're just basically flat year over year. Uh, next slide, please. Um, here's our future budget predictions. I usually build in about a 10% increase. There's talks that Google will be increasing licensing, um, so when you buy a Chromebook, you have to buy a license to go along with it. Um, uh, through the, the tech directors of the region and talking to our vendors, the Google, um, Chrome licenses, the price is going to be going up. There's talk that Google might increase the cost of the Google enterprise licenses that we use. That gives our teachers and students all the special features in the Google meets, um, like breakout rooms and, and, um, raising the hand and a few other things within the meet. Um, and also gives us some tools on the backend for cybersecurity, um, but there's talk that those prices will increase. So we want to be prepared. So when we're looking ahead, two years down the road, we, we are looking at a 10% increase each year. Hopefully it'll be less. So far, every time we present, we tend to, we tend to stay under that. Um, next slide. Um, there's just a visual graph for, uh, visual people, um, both on the board and, and at home and in the audience. audience. You'll see that we're pretty much remaining flat year-over-year. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
Anthony?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And that number I saw, the number of tickets, and you're only up to February, was like, wow. So thank you for handling all those calls. And also, the Chromebook rollout, the one-to-one initiative. I mean, congratulations on that. I mean, that was kind of very timely that we had a head start on that as well. The, there was some question, though, about how Chromebooks work at home that I've heard from parents about. I know when they're in our own Wi-Fi network, there's a lockdown of like, what websites they can go on and protect them and stuff. But when they get rolled out, you know, I don't know if they were going to roll out too fast, or they're just technology's not there for that. About, you know, what kind of security is on those Chromebooks to use at home?
We speak to that. All of our Chromebooks have the same web filter, whether you're onsite or at home. So the same filtering that you're dealing with when you're here, if you're behind to go to a site, for instance, gamblingpoker.com, you're going to get blocked here. You're going to get blocked from poker.com as well. When you're onsite, we do have a system for teachers. It's part of our web filtering system. It's called Relay Classroom is the product, and it gives teachers the ability to set up further restrictions for students in their classroom. That part of the system only works onsite. So a teacher can set up a whitelist to restrict students from going to other classes. They can actually view student screens, see what the student's looking at on their Chromebook. And they can send private individual messages to the student. I think it's a limit of 140 characters. I think it's like similar to Twitter. But they can say, just checking in, how are things going? You're not on task. Can you get back? Very silently, way to just let the student know that they're there. And that's part of the program that does only work onsite currently. Been in touch with our provider, Lightspeed, and they are working on a parent portal, but it hasn't yet been deployed, and we don't have many details on it yet.
Okay. So if a parent finds that their Chromebook can't go to poker.com...
They should call. They should contact the help desk at help@beaconk12.org.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. No, and thank you for all the hard work.
So you mentioned some of the Chromebooks are losing support. Have we actually lost support? And what's the oldest date on their oldest Chromebooks?
Sure. The Chromebook 11s are out of support. They're about six years old at this point. And the Chromebook 3120s are coming up end of support September 2021.
It's not a really long support life.
It's not.
I think that's called planned obsolescence.
But, I mean, other platforms are doing the same thing now. At a certain point, if you had Apple products, I worked with Apple before I came to Beacon. If you had Apple Model iPad 2, the iOS versions eventually are no longer supported. You can only go so high. That's very similar to what the Chrome, where Google is doing with Chromebook. So I think it's across the board. It's a way of the technology companies to continue making money and continue having people update their products.
Do they have any sort of recycling program for their Chromebook? Like, do we send them back?
We work with a recycling company to send back any sort of hardware that's been excised. So yes, we do recycle the equipment. Value-wise, there's typically no value for Chromebooks at that point, six years old. No market for it.
Another question. You mentioned AV recording equipment in this auditorium. Could you elaborate on that?
Sure. So in the back of the auditorium, in the back stairwell, there's an AV suite. It was built when the building was built, but it's substantially outdated, doesn't function. What we would do is upgrade that suite that's there. We would have cameras placed strategically in the auditorium, similar to the LGI, so that you would have different views. And then you could stream out and we'll all go back to a switcher in that room. So you could do recordings, you could do live streaming. The audio would all be interconnected, so you're not getting the feedback. So that's the goal there.
Yes, Anthony?
To follow up, so at some point, you were involved in some of the Makerspace conversation. I know that hasn't been happening lately, but how's that going? Is, I mean, you foresee something in the future, maybe even upping the game to maybe getting Arduino units so they can start stacking and building things?
Yeah. So we were anticipating the launch of Makerspace at Roundabout this year. I've been working with Brian Saltish last year, and we allocated some STEM funds in the budget for last year. We have some STEM funds built in for this year. We did purchase items for the Makerspace. We purchased some 3D printers. We purchased the green screen. We purchased some Spiro robots that are like coding robots, not Arduino boards, but that's something we could consider in the future. And we were hoping to launch that in the old computer lab next to the library, A104. With the pandemic hitting and the need for social distance, he needed to use that as a classroom space. So we did place the 3D printers in there and I think a couple of other items, but we didn't build out the full Makerspace just because he's using that space differently than we were anticipating together before the pandemic hit.
Are you involved in like the PTEC program from IBM or any type of subsidized or grant programs that would help bring like a robotics lab to the school?
I'm not involved directly with those programs, but we did recently reach out to IBM. Just in the last week, they announced the grant for cybersecurity, and we did apply for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Thanks so much, Mike.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you for being the backbone this year. We could not have done it without you.
Have a good night.
So we don't have any need for executive session unless a board member has a question on the agenda that needs to be asked in executive session. Are there any? Is there any need for that? Moving on from there, there are a couple of revisions to the agenda. There's a correction to the salary on the instructional agenda, 11.04B. And we did correct 1110. It had the, there was a mistake. It was a policy in the, it was not listed as a policy. Are there any student or school presentations? We already did the parent groups. Matt, do you want to give your superintendent's report?
All right. I'm just going to provide some updates tonight. I've been doing this at most of the meetings this year, just kind of tying in work updates and implementation updates to board goals. And so this year, I've really tied the Board Excellence Goal to all of our reopening efforts. And so I have some updates here, and we'll be updating the community this week a little bit further about these things that we're excited about. But even before I get to this, we, this year is like a, parts of this year are like a never-ending puzzle. And we, you know, we're doing things that we never would have dreamed of before. I very much in the past like to wait till 4:30 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning to make a weather call. Today, we made one at like, I think noon, because what we wanted to do is switch our schedule around so the kids in the Monday, Tuesday, or Blue Hybrid group could have school on Wednesday. So, you know, we switched our remote Wednesday to tomorrow and switched those Blue kids just because they've been missing so much time. The reason I'm sharing that story is this year, it presents just sort of like all of these kind of unforeseen challenges. And we started, well, I didn't start to notice right away. We were noticing that the Blue kids were missing a little bit more time because of all this snow. So anyway, that's just sort of a day in the life this year, and hopefully that all works. And, you know, even if it doesn't snow tomorrow, we'll be ready for the kids, the Blue kids to come back on Wednesday for a good day. But we have some updates here. The high school schedule has been a challenge all year, with both the in-person part and then attending to the students choosing remote or the hybrid students who need those remote days. So starting on March 1st, they have a communication going out today, the principal does, starting on March 1st, so that's three weeks from now. The hybrid students who are there on Monday and Tuesday will be going, attending a full day, periods one through eight on both Monday and Tuesday. And the Gold students will be attending two full days of periods one through eight. And the Remote students will be attending those classes at home, periods one through eight, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday will stay the same. We've been exploring this for quite some time. Part of this is, a couple of things factored into this one, the high school teachers being able to sort of live connect with the kids at home. We don't always say livestream because some of the classes don't let themselves to just appear livestream, but kids will be live checked in with or livestreamed at home, either whether they're hybrid or remote. And then the other part of this is I was hesitant to expand time in school during the winter holiday surge of COVID cases. Knock on wood, you know, and we very well may have a case tomorrow, but we haven't had a reportable case in quite some time in the district. As you know, cases and case rates have been going down in the state, region, in Dutchess County, and in Beacon for really the last three to four weeks. And hospitalizations are also going down. And so it really felt like the time was right to increase the amount of time high school students are in school. So we're really excited about that change, and there'll be more communication going out from Mississauga at the high school about that. But that's something we're very excited about. We see that. And then the next thing I'll talk about is a small step towards providing more of a sense of a normal school experience for our students. We see it as an important way to finish out this year, but also an important way to prepare for next year, too. So the next thing, I'll have, I have an email that'll be going out to the school community tomorrow that will have information about this. Nothing, you know, incredibly specific at this point, but we're working internally to develop plans to look into returning to four days a week of in-person instruction for elementary, middle, and quite honestly, for high school as well, if feasible. So we're trying to take the next couple of weeks, we've been working on this, you know, prior to tonight as well. We're trying to take the next few weeks to really work out a lot of the logistical, both instructional logistical and also just the physical logistical issues with bringing more students back on a more frequent basis for in-person instruction. For folks who have been following, you know, our cases this year, when I say cases, all of these COVID cases are really from the outside. You know, I say this in all the town halls I do. We've seen really zero transmission of the virus in school at all of our levels this year, which has really been incredible. And it's a testament to our staff and especially our students for following the health protocols. But our elementary schools really have seen very few cases this year, and they've probably seen the least impact of COVID. So we are really studying this in a very intensive level to see, to really see the possibilities for returning elementary students to four days a week. We're obviously, you know, going to work with health experts on this, meaning the Health Department, you know, our own staff. There's challenges with this. The way we created the elementary hybrid program, you know, creates, you know, creates some hurdles for us to get over in bringing kids back four days a week. We obviously are still, will be planning on, you know, continuing remote learning for the rest of the school year, so that won't be an issue. But there are some challenges with that. So just in terms of next steps, like I said, we're going to take the next couple of weeks to really study this and develop a plan. Last week of February, I'll do one or two town halls, which I always provide both summaries for. And then we post the videos on the website. And then probably early March, after we've kind of worked this out, if we feel like we can do it, and that is a big if. But if we feel like we can do it, then we'll be asking families to make a decision, you know, between opting for the expanded time in school or remote, or remote learning. And our plan would be for people to stick with that for the remainder of the year. If we're able to do this, we'd like to start elementary in a more expanded model, either before spring break or right after. So you may have noticed I said the word if probably about five different times, so there's still some things we're working on. But I think it's important to update you, and I thought it was important to update the whole community tomorrow, you know, via an email, just simply because as we are working on it internally, we're working on this with hundreds of people. And, you know, word of this really starts getting out when we start really looking at it, and we want folks to know. So we will be communicating about this like we've been communicating about our reopening efforts for COVID-19 this entire school year. So anyway, I look forward to providing more updates on that. And then lastly, our COVID voluntary surveillance testing starts on Wednesday this week. We have testing in the F, I think, 11 to 2 at Beacon High School. It's kind of a drive-through thing that we've created, and folks already have appointments. They've been phoned and emailed and all set. These are people who volunteered to do this, or we're not requiring this of anyone at this point. We might not be able to do Friday, so we might have to push the Friday group to next week. And we'll make a decision on that tomorrow morning. But we do have our testing program ready to roll for Wednesday. And so folks will pull into Beacon High School, they'll go over towards the athletic wing. They'll be directed towards the back in their car. The students will actually be swapped, I think, while they're in their car. And then the families will pull back to the front of the school, and we'll be able to try the results from the test about 15 minutes later. Again, the purpose of our voluntary surveillance testing is, A, to give us a sense of the level of the virus in our school community, and also to just simply identify some asymptomatic positive cases to help us stay healthy here in school. These are, you know, for the board equity goal. These are things that you're all familiar with, but I just wanted to provide quick updates on us moving forward with these things. We have a group of teachers at the secondary level, working with Dr. Sean Hunter on building this culturally relevant curriculum. Their first sort of more formal session with him is on February 24th, and then they have several sessions throughout the winter and spring and into the summer. And for the summer, we're working with Dr. Hunter on doing an expanded opportunity that would include more teachers and curriculum development. Eric is heading up a group, working on the student bill of rights, which we're, you know, looking ahead to somewhere in March, a formal inclusion to the code of conduct, or at least to have that be considered. We have a group of administrators participating in a diversity recruitment fair on February 27th, which is a regional thing. Our participation in that last year was successful, and we're excited to participate in that again. We were able to attract candidates to Beacon from the event last year, so we hope to have that same success. We have some smaller working groups meeting this month, but our next formal diversity committee meeting will be at the beginning of March. And then I hope in the next few weeks that we will have some dates behind our summer workshops for the Undoing Racism work. Just communication. These are quick. Our new website is up. these are quick. Our new website is up, newsletter is coming, and the town halls are ongoing. Love doing those town halls, as everyone knows. So we're, we're trying maybe to do something a little bit different with the chat and have it just be really focused on Q and A. But the, I think the town hall format and also just updating folks from the town halls has been a great way for us to keep people informed this year, especially regarding COVID. Oops. So this is just the front page of the website. It has a totally new look. It doesn't, it isn't completely dominated by the, by the one picture. And we are just so excited to have this. Although we are still working out some of the kinks and whatnot, and there's some changes I need to work on making this week and some updates. But it's been really nice, and a lot of people have been noticing. And we haven't even sort of formally told everyone that we're very excited to have this. Part of that's just the, if you scroll down at the bottom, so the, has a nice calendar function, which kind of keeps you updated on big events for the school district, too. So we're excited to have that. All right, the sustainability goal. So we're, the BOCES Center for Sustainability. Oops, I have the word center in there twice. Apologize about that. So they have some free events for districts this spring. So we're excited. We're going to have students participate in the Student Empowerment Panel on March 9th, which BOCES is hosting, and that's around sustainability efforts in the region. And then also getting, this event is also in March, but a little bit later in March, having some teacher involvement in the, in what's called "Sustainabilizing the Curriculum Design Studio." So hat tip to BOCES for making those events free this year for us to be involved in. And then we will be a formal member of the Sustainability Center next year, when they kind of make it more formal with districts. And then again, our ongoing work with the Building Conditions Survey, capital plan development, will really have a strong sustainability focus. I think that's it. Culture of Care, these are just quick. We are working on planning continued professional development for both responsive classroom and restorative practices, most likely taking place this summer. Responsive Classroom has announced their summer professional development, and barring any major change in health situations in any region, including ours, they're, they're trying to have the workshops in person, which, so a number of our teachers are already asking me about, about participating in that. And seeing them at least try to plan for these to be in person warmed, warmed my heart a little bit. It just kind of, you know, one more thing that gave me some hope for the future. This work, this kind of work, the restorative practices work certainly can take place in a Zoom environment, but if it's safe to do in a, in a face-to-face environment, we'd love to do that with staff because it's, I think, more powerful. Just lastly, and this is back to COVID, the vaccination efforts continue. We work really closely with the county. They are our main sort of vaccination. You know, we, we coordinate our efforts and they basically allot slots. They, they've changed up, at least they've changed their strategy for this week. I imagine it's going to be the strategy going forward. But the last few weeks, they sent, would send us a link and, and, and we would send a link to all of our staff. And I think every district in Dutchess did it at exactly the same time. And the link would probably get filled up in less than 60 seconds for appointments for a vaccine. Now they're allocating, you know, numbers of slots to each school district, and we line up the people to, to get the vaccine. And so we have 10 slots for Saturday for people in the district. I know 10 is not anywhere near enough, but it just also gives me a sign of hope that I know that number will start increasing. We'll really be able to coordinate with our staff who hasn't gotten one, you know, here's a chance to get one, et cetera. And, you know, people getting vaccinated is also really a big part of that thing that I started with, is returning to having more people in our buildings. So these are just a lot of things that we have been working on. And open to questions if anybody has some, or they can come up and do a report[897.13]
...that just sort of shows our progress towards getting those actions completed. So, so that can be something I talk with you and Alyssa about further than we bring to like a future board meeting, just in terms of what that might look like.
That sounds great.
Yeah, just because I, I think, you know, I think that was my plan a year ago. And then everything became about reopening and even though, uh, this, even though this worked towards a potential return, you know, more in-person time for kids, uh, will take up a lot of bandwidth over the next few weeks trying to figure out. I also feel it's very, very important right now to be transparent and clear about our planning for next year. That's not just about COVID, but it's about everything we do.
Yeah, there are a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts that are continuing during this amazingly, but they're, they're not living in a place that's easy to point a community member to.
Right. And now that we have our beautiful new website, thank you Anthony, uh, we, we have a nice place to show it off too.
Thank you.
And I also just want to say thanks to Flora for, she's, you know, the chair of the PR advocacy committee, but she's also really helped us with the website, just kind of on the side as well. So, thank you for making it happen for us.
Thank you. I mean, there were nice kids pictures up there and I, you know, I do, you know, it's nice to see them, but, but the way they were, the way they were on there would seem like that was the only thing on the website.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Right. And we, we will be changing those pictures frequently. And that will be one of our actions or major actions or something. So.
That's all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports and board comments. Anthony, what?
I have none. Committee hasn't made since last board meeting, sorry.
So, uh, since Kristen's not here tonight, I can just summarize for facilities and operations. We have been meeting with our architects and they've been doing the building conditions survey and giving us some perspectives on what's out there. It's, it's rather daunting because they go over it with the close eye and a knowledge of when things are wearing out, when things are going to wear out before long, uh, when things need to be upgraded for code, safety, security, what have you. Some things, as was mentioned earlier tonight, uh, are not working or have not worked for some time. And you just sort of start living without it and then somebody discovers, oh, uh, there's a component that needs to be replaced. So, that is kind of, in most cases, the more boring part of it, but it's not boring if your roof starts leaking. It's very annoying and dangerous. So, these are things that will need to be attended to. In some cases, we, we've asked the architects to start looking at what would make the school better as opposed to just fixing up things that are wearing out or what have you. And they have indeed got a number of ideas. And of course, they're meeting with the principals and, uh, everybody in a position to make some comments about what they would like to see. It's, it's a, uh, bigger capital project than what we did the last time. And we're examining the question of just how big can it be and how big do we want to go? But it's early days, so have no numbers that I'd care to quote tonight. But as we get into this, I think we'll be seeing a lot of opportunities for making things better around this district. Uh, we do have a pretty good financial capacity just based, uh, on debt that is being retired. Old borrowing for old projects where you pay it off and then you can take on new bonding without having, uh, direct impact on the total cost due to the capital work. So, you keep up with things and manage to do some improvements here and there. So, uh, that's, um, kind of where we're at right now. We'll be getting into this much more intensively in the coming months. And we'll report further and at our next meeting, hopefully have a few more details. So, if I can change over to the audit and finance, we have on the agenda tonight. This committee is being renamed Audit and Finance to broaden the scope a bit. Historically, it would meet once a year to get the report from our external auditors. We have two sets of auditors. There's the internal auditors and the external auditors. So, we have met with the internal auditors who have given us some insights into some things that we can be doing better. And we took a quick look at the Controller's Report, which interestingly enough, uh, dealt with things that you should have on, on the website. So, that fits right into the upgrading of the website. Various financial information that they believe should be or is supposed to be placed on the website now that we have websites. So, um, that, um, is part of what we've been doing. We also are restructuring, uh, this committee in, in alignment with an, an option that exists, which is to add experts from outside. And tonight on the agenda, we have a, uh, basically it's a request for volunteers. Since we're not offering to pay, this is basically just like being on the Board of Ed, you don't, you don't get a paycheck. But you, uh, hopefully can offer some outside advice, uh, to this committee and to the board and to the staff. And, um, so we'll be promulgating that after we adopt it tonight. If anybody knows of people with good qualifications who are not scared of numbers and who do not have excessive math anxiety, they can look at a budget, could look at an auditor's report, things like that, and make sense of it. Uh, we're looking for a couple of people to join that committee. They don't even have to be residents of the district, but they do have to have some background, some basis for being able to make a contribution. So, uh, that's on the agenda for tonight, I see, right? Later on?
Yes, it is. New business.
Okay, good. If, um, any questions or comments, I try to address them or somebody else can.
Um, well, should we wait till, wait till that part?
Do it later?
Yeah.
That'll be it then.
Okay, thank you. Anthony?
Oh, um, so good evening. Um, I don't have a report from the Diversity Committee. I guess there's a meeting scheduled in March, so that's good. Um, and I've been, uh, delinquent in working with, uh, Eric on trying to get a day for the subcommittee going. So, uh, you know, we started a conversation tonight and, uh, on the bill rights and then, uh, from subcommittee to committee and, uh, work on from there. And we haven't really, uh, crossed any other, uh, items, um, like the advisor communication plan or anything like that. So, it's gonna, it's a slow go for now. Um, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll proceed forward. Uh, I do want to highlight the, uh, the grounds, uh, the, uh, the, uh, some of the PTO, PTA support on, uh, recycling, uh, plastic films. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware of that buzz that's going around now. But, uh, between the City Beacon, CAC, the Beacon Lions and some of the PTOs and the farmers market and stuff, there are those plastic films that, um, your bread comes in, um, you know, wrapped cases of water bottles. So, that flexible films and stuff, we're starting to recycle them. So, um, a couple of us have, uh, have offered some, um, storage space. And there are, there are at least three collection boxes so far. Trying to put a collection box outside is a little iffy because, uh, either you can get blown in the wind or something like that. So, or use as regular garbage. So, but hopefully more to come on that and, uh, thank you for, uh, for those that are participating in that effort as well. Other than that, I don't have, uh, much. I do know that, uh, the, um, someone, um, that, um, the Southern Dutchess N W C P is kind of, is trying to brought up again. The unit has been asleep for a little while. Um, so, uh, they're in the midst of recruiting. So, that's, uh, it's also a very good thing for, um, on that front as well. Um, that's all I got.
Thank you. John?
I've, I've got nothing.
Jasmine?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so this is, uh, it has to do with the Wellness Committee and also a side project. Um, remember Shawnee Martin? She, um, is a culinary chef, plant-based mostly. She actually did a video that is up on YouTube. Um, she was able to, um, do a side project. I forgot which official, well, whoop someone. So, she did a YouTube video with her puppet, Dudley the Dragon. So, it's for the kids, pretty much, um, getting them into more plant-based foods. So, she did a banana boat, uh, with lots of fruits and berries and things of that nature. So, it's definitely for kids. So, it was just in time for Black History Month. Um, happy Black History Month. And it's up on YouTube now, so I'm really excited about it. It's, it's a great direction.
Could you share that link with the board?
Okay.
That would be great. Thanks.
Okay. And she's someone that spoke at the Wellness Committee?
Uh huh.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Flora?
Um, yeah, so last week was pretty eventful. Uh, we had the, um, Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Meeting on Monday. Uh, we talked about the executive budget and our response to it, which we finalized. Thank you Anthony for that statement. It was super thorough. It was really excellent. Um, we also, you know, acknowledged that our biggest legislative issues are going to be the budget and state testing. So, we're, you know, going to keep focusing on developments there and looking to organizations like the Lower East, uh, sorry, Laura Hudson Education Coalition and NISBA for their responses and their updates to see how we can expand our advocacy. Uh, we also discussed adding, um, an advocacy section to the website, which would include, um, options and tips for community engagement, uh, legislative and media contacts and board statements. Um, and Laura Hudson Education Coalition is sharing their executive, uh, budget response. I think that will come this week or next week and our name is on that. So, it'll be great to see, you know, um, a bunch of districts from the region, uh, banded together in one statement. Um, and I think we can, we can put that on the site when it, on the website when it's made available. Um, I just, I think, uh, you know, more districts together makes a, a bigger impact. So, that's great. There was also the NISBA Capital Conference last Wednesday. You know, budget was obviously a big part of the conversation. Uh, NISBA's governmental relations rep, John Daly, gave a really good breakdown of the budget and, um, the potential issues for, uh, education budgets. Um, Governors, the Governor's Deputy Education Secretary, Dan Fuller, um, he sort of justified using up all the federal aid now as, as a way to focus on the immediate problem. But obviously there are concerns about that in terms of us hitting a cliff when the aid, aid runs out. He also did say there's no substantive changes in how the school budget modes will be conducted this year, but the process, uh, seems to be TBD right now. Um, there was also a recorded statement from, uh, State Senator Shelley Mayeran, who was the Education Committee Chair. And she had talked about a, um, package of legislation that I guess the Senate majority had, uh, had put forward on education equity. Um, and one thing that they had, uh, talked about in one of the bills is, um, creating pathways for more people of color to become educators, um, including investment in Grow Your Own Teacher Initiatives, which, um, is supposed to provide sort of frameworks and s- support for, um, more training and mentorship opportunities. I thought that was pretty cool. And then on Thursday was the Dutchess County School Boards Association Meeting. We learned that every district, uh, in Dutchess County is a member this year, so that's great. And, uh, the highlight was the, uh, brief introduction to the, um, VOS Es Board Candidates this year. So, there are three slots and four people running. Uh, you know, the three incumbents are Edward McCormick, Rick Keller Coffey and Rob Rubin. And then there's obviously Karen Smike, who's new on the scene, and that was exciting to see. Yeah, so that's it.
I have a question, um, maybe not to Flora, but maybe to Matt. The Grow Your Own, uh, did, we still have that program, right? With Marist or?
Um, I'm not sure it's, it's fully, it's fully functional right now. So, I, I can look into and provide an update to the board. I don't think it is right now.
No, that was me.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Flora.
Thanks, Flora. Alyssa?
Uh, thank you. First, I have just a question. I guess Flora, maybe you can answer it. For the website, I was just, um, clicking around. Is there an email we can use if we are like QAing and see some weird, you know, broken link or, um, who should we?
Yeah, I think the original plan, Matt, I don't know if you're, you still wanted to do, create an email address that went to Mike Healy and to you? I mean, is that, was that the idea?
Yeah, I mean, I, I probably would add, you know, does relate to that communications person too. So, yeah, we can get on that tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that, that'd be great. I just noticed that the four links at the bottom of the page, homepage, don't go anywhere. And one of those is the employment link.
Okay.
Which I would think is important to have working.
Right.
So, we met with, the Policy Committee met last Monday and we reviewed a whole bunch of policies. We have, I think, seven on the agenda for tonight. And again, thanks to Bill Relone for keeping this, uh, work moving along. We're accomplishing a lot. And, um, we're on target to meet our goal for this year to have a brand new policy manual, which also, uh, one of those bottom links on the website is supposed to link to the policies. So.
Yeah, I don't, I think those might actually be legacy from the template and shouldn't be there.
Shouldn't be there, okay. Um, so the next meeting of Policy Committee is Monday, March 1st at 7:00 PM. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have no comments. So, moving on to new business, we have, um, we have four items. The first is, um, we have to approve the, our new charter, which includes, as Craig mentioned, a new name. Anthony, um, found a little typo toward the very end about, um, it's just a nonsense word, my, my fault. In the sentence regarding the oath that a volunteer member would take. Um, but other than that, are there any questions or comments about the charter?
I think it's very comprehensive. I, I liked it a lot. Um, you know, I had questions about confidentiality, addressed that. I had questions about, um, you know, rigor, I had addressed that. So, I, I thought it was a pretty comprehensive charter.
Yeah, I'm really happy with it. Any other?
I, I have just an easy question on the request for volunteers. The Audit and Finance Committee members may not be, not that I want to be on the committee, but are Board of Ed members excluded from eligibility on this committee?
I think that the idea, I suppose it could be a school board member, but the idea of the volunteer is that we can't always depend on the school board members to have the kind of expertise. And so, it's really looking for someone who, um, who does. So, in a sense, I think that that school board member would probably already be on the committee and we're still looking to sort of fill out the committee with someone from outside of the, of the board or the district.
I see. I just didn't know if that should, if, if that list of bullets should include.
May not be a school board member?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's an absolute. These are things that are really unethical or, you know, just don't work. I think a school board member could work, but it's not ideal. Do, does that make sense to you, Craig?
I'm not sure I understand that the question. Could you repeat that?
I'm just wondering if the vol, if the volunteer could be also a school board member, like the, you know, we have this request.
From this board or?
Yeah.
I don't know. That, that's a question that, uh, has, we've debated before about how many board members could be on a committee before you've got a quorum in the room. So.
Right. And you would have five at that point, including the president.
That, that, um, I, I'm thinking we're looking for people who have degrees.
No, I understand. I just wondered if maybe you wanted to list the school board members on the list of exclusions for who, who can and can't be on the committee.
Oh, in, in terms of exclusion? No, I don't think we anticipated doing that. I mean, it could happen. But then we have to resolve that other question about how many board members could be on a committee. I don't know that we ever asked legal to give us a definitive opinion, but that was our, our, our protocol anyway. So.
Yeah, I mean, according to the charter, it's three trustees plus the president and then two non-trustee, non-trustee members. So, I think it's sort of explicit in the charter.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, if you feel like you want to add it.
No, I just was curious that, I mean, if it was omitted or something.
Are there any other questions or comments about it? So, um, we actually need to approve the charter. So, can I have a motion to approve our new Audit and Finance Committee Charter?
Anthony, um, motion to approve the charter and, um, with the, uh, amendment to the typo.
Yes. And then second?
Second.
Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Thank you. The second and the, and no other questions about the, um, request for volunteers? So, with that, um, we talked about getting this out certainly in the local papers, but also sending it, um, to local colleges that have an accounting program. And, um, look, I mean, it doesn't have to be within the Beacon community, but relatively local, definitely in New York State. Maybe, uh, accounting firms as well. So, we'll, we will get on that. And I assume it will be sort of a rolling, you know, we'll always be accepting applications and maybe have, ideally have a couple of people, um, on a list in case we lose someone. Assuming we can get two people to start. I think so, yeah. Okay, so moving on, um, Anthony had requested that we discuss minutes for committees, but I actually would love it if it was a slightly broader conversation just in general about committee procedures. The, actually, the Audit and Finance Charter has, um, a little bit of information I think would be good for all committees in terms of, um, creating an agenda, taking minutes and, um, you know, how to record that. But do you want, Anthony, did you want to talk about the minutes first?
Yeah, and I think, um, we've talked about, uh, recording either a summary or minutes or however formal and formal I guess the, the scribe wants to be in terms, in terms of documenting the conversations that's happening in committees. So, that, um, uh, and the benefit of that is, is, is A, if there was a past conversation, go back on those notes. B, if you have a replacement of somebody on committee, at least there's a record that they can, uh, review or history. See if there's any decisions that have to be memorialized, at least, um, it's, it's memorialized in those, in those, in those records. And, uh, it, it's good for transparency too. I mean, if we include them in, in, in our, you know, we do approve the minutes of the board. Every, uh, you know, we approved the past board meeting, minutes and this, and the next board. And, um, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's, wherever it may be documented, warehoused or whatever, it would be good for transparency, whether it's minutes or in its own website or what have you, um, as long as folks can find it.
Yeah, one idea that came up in the PR committee is having, um, having a, you know, a bar for every committee where the, the agenda and then the agenda, agenda including the minutes would be there. So, that people could kind of go through and see what committees have been doing. Um, and there's a record. Does that sound acceptable to everyone?
Well, I was thinking, I was talking to some board members in other districts and what they do is they're administrators that attend or oversee the committees. What they do is they write up a summary of the meeting and then the chairperson, if they feel comfortable the administrator wrote up the summary worth it or the chairperson, share it with the chairperson and then the chairperson reports out at, at the board meeting. And then that, those minutes would be incorporated into the board minutes. So, like that summary piece would be incorporated into a board meeting. So, it helps the administrators kind of stay with what was the theme, what was the summary and so forth. And then it's helping the board members report out accurately what is the summary when we're doing our board comments or our committee reports.
I think that's great as long as it's also stored in a place where it's not buried in board documents. I like the idea of it maybe, I mean, maybe it's both, maybe to keep it on our minds and to keep it in the discussion. It's part of the board docs, but then it also is sort of part of a page for that, for each committee.
So, and then I, that was my follow-up question is like, is it just in the board, um, board minutes? And they said, no, what they do is they keep a binder for each committee. So, then they have a timeline as to when they need to go back to look to see, was this previously discussed or not? They could go to those summaries.
Like a physical binder.
A physical document. And they keep it for each committee and then they could go to that.
The benefit though online is that parents have access to it or?
Right. So, I'm saying you could do electronic one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
I can search for keywords too. It's electronic.
Yeah, I think that that would be great. Um, I think, how do you, what do you feel about, um, I mean, I think it's fine if we want to decide that it's an administrator's job to take minutes. And we've talked about even having the, um, the board clerk come to take minutes for certain committees. I was thinking that maybe, I'd love to create a committee procedure document, kind of like our new school board handbook, that just sort of lays this stuff out. And so, I wanted to see how you guys feel about that being something that gets decided at the same time that the chair gets decided every year. And so, you can decide amongst yourselves, um, you know, so-and-so is happy to take minutes. And so, that's that person's role unless, you know, something happens and they can't. Or if they decide, you know, this is a really detailed committee, we really need the board clerk to come in. That's, you know, at the pleasure of that committee. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
What do we do, what do we do about committees that are not board committees, but the district committees, but the board members there?
I mean, well, for example, on the Wellness Committee, um, I feel like, uh, Bill and I have a pretty good floor. I, I take the notes. He, he helps develop the agenda and he'll send it out. But then I'll take the notes and send them to him and then that all gets posted to the page. So, you have the agenda there and you also have the, the summary. But it's, it was like, I was willing to do it, you know? Even though it's a district committee.
Okay. So, so, so the same and work it out, you know, kind of among the, okay.
So, the committee is going to decide on the minute taker. At the beginning of the school, you know, in July when we get the, or September often, when the committee is good, going, when they decide a chair. And then, um, in terms of the agenda and using the agenda as part of the minutes, does that, that seems reasonable to us?
Yeah, I think that's a great.
That's great.
And then the last part is, when do you feel that the agenda should be, um, should come out? In term, for, you know, as a courtesy to other committee members, how, how far in advance should the agenda be released before committee meeting?
Does it depend on the committee? I'm just thinking.
It does.
I'm just thinking of policy.
Right, policy, we try to get it out a week in advance because the policies are lengthy. So, maybe that's, again, that gets decided by the, so every committee is kind of going to have their own procedure. But this is the general umbrella procedure for how committees do that. Does that?
Yeah, and every committee is aware that they have to come up with it. That's a good.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to write this up and we can look at it at the next board meeting, maybe. And, um, hopefully just get something that's very consistent between. And hopefully just get something that's very consistent between the committees. Oh, and the last thing, actually, this came up earlier and I sort of botched it, but I would love for the committees to set a goal, or goals, if it's reasonable for the year at that same time, or, you know, in that, in their first couple of meetings. So I'll put that in, and we can, if you guys are okay with the wording, we'll keep it. Okay?
Yeah.
Any other thoughts about what should be included in committee procedures?
It's good.
If you think of something, email me and I'll add it in.
Could perhaps you summarize this in a memo of protocol, and does this need to be a policy or just a protocol?
It's more of a protocol, I think, but yeah, that's my idea, is to summarize it so that everyone has it to refer to, and we can give it to new board members if they come on, so it's not a mystery.
And the subject of committee meeting scheduling is sometimes challenging, and I think we might benefit from discussing it a bit. We've, we recognize that it's an advantage to have a schedule that's flexible because we're not sure exactly, sometimes when some of the people we need can be present. Thinking of the two committees that I met last week, we had outside guests, experts, contractors, whatever, consultants come in, and sometimes it's very dependent upon their schedules, especially since we typically do this at night. Some people travel from a distance. In other cases, it's better if we have a regular schedule so we can organize our lives around it and how they coordinate with board meetings. That's, I find it very challenging to figure out, and I think what I'm pleading for here is that the president of the board should take a good hand in trying to wrangle this into some reasonable order. Because sometimes we just, maybe it's partially because of COVID communications and so, we don't always pay enough attention to trying to think out ahead and schedule the meetings, it's more of a catch-as-catch-can thing.
Yeah, I agree. And that's, actually, I'll add that to the procedures, that, you know, if possible, the committee should set their calendar for the year, subject to change, obviously, but, but in general, yeah, I think, I mean, the audit and audit finance and facilities have been difficult to schedule for a number of reasons, but I think that we should at least put it on the calendar, so it's there, and then change it if we need to. It seems like a better way to do it, because at least it's there to remember that it's, you know, that we can do it, if that's the case. And speaking of, I mean, both of those committees need to be scheduled for this month, so I can send out an email tomorrow, and we can try to figure out when that's going to be.
It would be also good if we had a central repository where all these are listed, so that we can avoid conflicts and make sure we know what meetings we're going to, and then if that could also be made available to the public by way of the district calendar, which usually happens once we make the decisions.
Yep, I did start a calendar that has all the board meetings in it, and I think all of, it has the meetings that have been scheduled, and I can send everyone a link to that again.
Something I can put on the refrigerator.
Well, you're going to have to print it up. That's, that's as far as I can go for you, Greg.
And in my electronic refrigerator, which I have on your cell phone, so I have double coverage now.
You can put double-sided tape on a tablet and just paste it on your refrigerator if you need to.
Great, thank you guys so much. Are there any other thoughts or questions about that? Okay, so moving on to the advocacy letter that Anthony White sent in, thank you so much. Flora did edit it a tiny bit, but just some of the language. We were, the only thing that we wanted to maybe add to this is a little bit of detail on the state abrams, I don't know, Amory, if you have. Right. Well, let's talk about the general language. I mean, in many ways, I don't, I'm not sure that it's a deal breaker to, you know, if we don't have details on the state aid run, I think it's mostly important for us to have as, in, you know, in terms of talking points. So first, does anyone have any comments or questions about the letter in general?
So I just want to explain how it came to be. So after the last board meeting, I was thinking about it, and I was saying, let's see how many things I could target that is wrong with how we get the governor's run and aides and so forth. So I was brainstorming, and I came up with seven issues with how the budget is so far, and that's basically the seven numbers that were in the letter. So if you look at the first one, it's really going to, you know, expanding the base aid in one category, making it service aid, so it's not transparent. You don't really know where the aid's coming from, or what aid you're going to get from year to year. Then, point two was, okay, it's great that the feds are going to supplement, but they're really supplanting, so what's going to happen is, let's say that we get $10 million, right? And this is what I was thinking. If you have $10 million state aid this year, and then federal aid is going to be $1 million, you cannot bank on the federal aid two years later. So they're really supplanting, and now your new baseline for aid is not 10 million, but it's 9 million. And this is similar to what they did in 2008, 2007, 2008. So then it adjusted our base aid in a reduction because they were supplanting the federal aid money and not supplementing it. So I thought that was an important point to say, hey, listen, that's fine, but you better have a plan for the federal aid, so it's reoccurring, because federal aid isn't reoccurring as the state aid is. The bullet number three was just talking about transportation, they're really messing with the transportation aid. Now they're asking for more documentation, if it's over $6,500 per run, they're asking for documentation as to why, and you have to justify it, and I think they're trying to say that, you know what, it might be a new threshold that is 6,500, and then you'll only get aid over that piece. So I'm just sketchy about what the state is going to do with that piece. Then the star aid, there's no need to have it. Why are they giving us a star aid? That's misleading information, there's no need to have it in our school aid run. Then bullet five was about the foundation aid, and I just, that's a reoccurring theme that's been happening since 2007, 2008. 2006 was a plea with the comptroller's office to say, hey, let's not have the threshold of the 4%, be it, let's move it to eight, because if they're, if we're going to, if they're going to be so inconsistent with how we're going to be getting state aid, let us, at a local level, be responsible and plan for when they cut. And if they are not going to be responsible, and that we need to be responsible so we don't impact kids, so it's saying, don't have that 4% as the un-appropriate fund balance, make it 8%. And then seven is, and I think this is in our case this year, for our, Dan Marie, or less than 2%?
The growth factor's less than 2%.
Yeah, so what we're saying is, okay, so we know that based on just salaries, they're going to be increasing about 2% each year, right? So why should our increase be less than that? So it's saying that the minimum that it could be of the increase is 2%. Don't let it be the 1.36 or anything less, right? Right now, there's an option, so say, let's take the, the minimum would have to be 2%. And so that's how I came, that's how I was drafting it, is like, I thought of the issues, and I just tried to formalize it.
It was great, because in every conversation I've heard since, like, they hit exactly what you said, so it's really thorough, I appreciate it.
Yeah, the Capitol Conference was basically this letter, pretty much. And yeah, the, you know, foundation aid is like flat again, and it's never been enough, it's never fully funded, the agreement, so it continues to be really disappointing.
And I did add, in six, I put besides the 4% to 8%, I was talking about the reserve too, not having a cap on the reserve for the TRS.
And this supplanting, you know, the federal money, there's, that's not what it's meant for. I mean, it's meant to pay for, this was made very clear during the Capitol Conference, it's meant to pay for extra expenses that we've incurred due to COVID, not to cover.
Let's take the CARES Act, right? So this year, we got the CARES Act, but the state aid was reduced, and what did they do? They gave us the CARES Act money for the exact amount the state aid went, right? So how is that helping us with the COVID relief? It's not, here we budgeted that money and spent it, right? So, so it's not going to happen, then what happens is, that trouble money, the CARES Act money will be gone, and now our new baseline is lower. I mean, you think of it, now, we don't want to use our un-appropriate fund balance and reserves for our daily educational piece. It's like using your savings account to live. It's going to go away, because you're not going to be able to put money in there because you're using your savings account. So that means when you're using your savings account, you can't put any in there because you're using what you have saved.
Exactly. I think there was a chart that Amory showed that showed how long it took to recover in 2008 from, you know, these cuts, and it was, it was like, it was five years, I think, wasn't it?
Well, some districts are, I mean, we were lucky because we got most of our foundation aid in the last, what, two years or so, right? But I mean, it's 2021, and that was seven and eight, so it's more than 10 years. You know, so it's like, and there are districts that still have not received that foundation aid. And we were lucky that we got most of it, and it was recently that we had. So I think it's just that the government needs to be smarter, I mean, they're always putting these new regulations on, I mean, the regulations to ensure that students with disabilities, for the ENL students and stuff, we need to make sure that we can provide these services and actually give a quality education to the kids, and that's what it's about, I mean, they may not see the dollar, but it's affecting them, right? We worked hard to get our class sizes low, thank goodness we did, because now we could talk about possibly bringing kids back at the elementary level, in the middle school level, four days a week, because our class sizes are low, 12 to 17 in a class instead of 25, 26, because if that was the case, we wouldn't be able to even think about the four days a week, right? So we've been responsible, and it's been a poor goal for years, to keep our class sizes low, we're there, and now we might have to cut teachers through matrician, or not be able to do it, and yet we're dealing with a pandemic, and we might be one of the only districts that can bring kids back four days a week. Which, but that's, that's a long-term goal that we were working on, so it's huge.
And the budget also doesn't address the incredible mental health needs that we face with our students.
Or we're going to face with our students because of the pandemic.
Exactly, so yeah, there's a lot, a lot missing from it. I would propose, Flora, did you have any comments, or?
I was just going to say, I think it's fine without the members.
That's what I was going to say. Perfect. Okay, so is everyone in favor of sending this to our representatives?
Yes.
Yeah. Send it far and wide.
Okay. Yeah, we'll also put it on our website, if any community members want to take the talking points and send it themselves, make phone calls, we really encourage it.
Absolutely.
Okay, the last, is it the last thing? The last thing is to discuss the nomination and election for a BOSI's board. Our deadline for this is actually not until March 23rd, so we have three meetings before we have to send in our nominations. I guess, I was thinking we would give it at least one more meeting to see if we heard from any of the other people running, but so far we have not.
I did send a request to the law during the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting, so maybe the other two will reach out.
Okay, so I.
Sir, so for attempt 1003, are we, we're not voting to send the letter, or are we?
I don't think we need to vote for that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I feel like consensus is enough.
Yeah, okay, I thought the vote would be consensus, because it's being signed by the, by the, by us.
By the entire board.
By the board of that, yes.
Have we made a vote? I guess we have voted on it.
Yeah, make a motion, we send the letter.
Anthony?
Second.
Greg, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is eight zero. Okay, thanks, Anthony. So, back to the BOSI's board members. Are there any comments or questions currently about it? Is everyone okay with waiting?
So, she wants to be nominated, some board needs to nominate her?
Yes.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
Okay, do you, I mean, do you want to wait and see, because we can put up three nominations?
Well, we could, I mean, if there's other, does anybody have other ideas in mind? This is the only approach I'm aware of.
Right, but the deadline is March 23rd.
March 23rd, and we have meetings between now and then, of course.
We do, we have three meetings, and so I felt that maybe it would be, especially since Flora put out a request to see if any other candidates wanted to write a letter or speak with us.
Yeah, well, they could come in.
Absolutely.
Same as Karen Smith did.
Yeah, she emailed the board and asked to come speak, and we would give the same courtesy to any other candidates.
I'd be happy to offer that nomination tonight, and if others come forth, let's examine them when they do, if they're looking for somebody to nominate them, and we think they're good, then we could do that too. I mean, I think she's probably, or anybody else is probably making the circuit of different districts looking for, you need to get a nomination. And as I understand it, the three incumbents are all planning to run again also?
Yes.
I think I saw that, right?
Yeah.
So, it would be interesting to see the interest of other people in a contest.
Sure, I mean, I think that's great. I'm not totally sure if we can send in rolling nominations.
In the past, we would have to wait, we would have to put the three on one and then send it in, so even if we nominated tonight, it wouldn't get sent until we made the full nominations of the three. So I think that waiting until we can do it all at once would be a cleaner way of doing it. I appreciate Karen coming.
Definitely.
But I also think that, you know, as a part of a process, sending one up and nominating one, and nominating one, and nominating, what happens if you didn't, if they do come, you already made a nomination, and then what happens if, like, they come and draft instead of like coming all at the board meeting, so I would be in favor of waiting.
Well, you know, do you have to wait? I mean, is there some, is there a legal requirement to do so? I don't think the communications we have from, what's her name, was clear on the point, or even addressed it.
I think, I think we can act early, just what happens is, let's say, for example, like, we like Karen, and then there's two other people we like as well, but we already sent one name up, I mean, is that foreclose our ability to send two more names up, right? So, and I, so I'm looking at the calendar, we have a board meeting on the 22nd, it's due on the 23rd. I mean, I don't know if it has to be mailed or electronic, but we do, I think we should put on our calendar when we pull that plug, you know, when we make that call. Should it be on March 8th board meeting, or should it be on March 22nd board meeting?
Right, I, I mean, I can confirm that if we need to do it on the 8th or the 22nd, but we do have at least two more meetings before then, so.
Can I ask a question about this letter that was sent?
Mm-hmm.
It says each district can have unlimited nominations, so does that mean we can nominate all four? Am I misunderstanding this?
Yes.
Even though there are three, only three open seats?
Yes. So we could make it, we could make it a runoff or some sort of whatever, I mean. So, I mean, you know, we could just send one name up at a time too, I mean, it's just.
Well, I would certainly be in favor, as with anything, of having all the information that I'm going to have before I make a decision.
We get clarification on this, like, it sounds like we could nominate all four, and other districts could do the same, so.
Yeah, that's not what's clear to me, so once you have a nomination from someone, does it have to be nominated by all nine component districts? The same person in order to be elected? No, okay, so as long as there's one nomination, then you put your name on the ballot, and then I guess somehow there's a vote, right? Okay. Oh, well, then that makes vote, now, well, then that, then that, actually, then we don't foreclose anyone, I mean, if we send one name up, that gets on the ballot, and those other two people, three people, will probably pick another district to send their name up, you know? I thought we were voting for that, okay. I thought somehow there was no open election, that the board members choose the BOSI's board members.
Why don't I get some clarification on that to, for the next meeting?
Okay. But I, I'm willing to support Karen, uh, nominee her.
I, I.
We'll just have to wait to see what that process looks like.
Yeah, I really liked what Karen said. Okay.
And she marched with us at the Spirit Beacon Day Parade, I mean, you know?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to base it on marching. I'm just going to put it out there, anybody can march with me, it doesn't mean I'm going to vote for them.
Yeah, I'd like to see the Bosse's members come down and march with.
Okay, Anthony, okay, so I'm going to move on if everyone's okay with that. Okay, the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to be, have pulled from the consent agenda?
11.08.
Okay, anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 11.18, less 11.08?
So moved.
Flora, second. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, so it passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 11.08?
So moved.
Anthony?
Anthony, second.
Anthony, second. Uh, comments or questions?
Yeah, I just saw, like, we have the current contract in place and then we have the new contract with Dutchess mediation and it looks like the prices, they, they didn't outline their fees and payments the same way or have the same categories and it looks like some adjustments were made to the pricing, I was wondering if we know how many people have been attending and because it says, like, a student training was, they had student training as one group in a current contract, but it's not in another contract, does that mean that they're not doing any student training anymore? And then like facilitation was 50 hours and then it has community circle facilitation, is that the same?
Anthony, which one's more recent?
The 21-1, the price of 21-1 is the one that we're asking to approve tonight.
Yeah, so that has student training on it.
That one does, right, but I was asking if they didn't do the student training in the previous one.
Oh.
So one of the things that happened was that, um, they had the expectation, well, actually, they thought that they would be, um, providing less services this school year, but they realized that they had to provide more, more support for, um, for the in-person services, uh, well, not necessarily the in-person services, but just in terms of, uh, providing like the talking circle practices, um, they needed to be, uh, on demand much more than they have, um, thought previously. So what it is, is that we don't have as many teachers, uh, trained as we would like to have totally trained in the process, it's only, uh, they've received like, the entire school has received like one or two trainings, but we have like about three or four teachers that have gone through the entire program. And so they're supporting those teachers with providing circles to, um, talking circles to, uh, students on a weekly basis.
So like, but in the contract, in the current one that we have, it has training 45 hours, $125 an hour. And in the new one, it says, it says staff training, 10 hours for the Beacon City School District, that $360 an hour, 400 per person if it's nine people in public training. So like, is that the same training or is it different trainings?
No, it's, it's more trainings that they added, they thought that, um, what, what they had in mind this year was that they would provide, uh, less training, um, in the original contract, but they realized they needed to be more of a support than they had, um, originally doing, so some of the, um, they were able to reduce the contract, um, but because of the trainings are more so, uh, online, like, they're more so virtual, but they need to provide more, uh, more support overall. See, so they're able to take away, uh, some of the costs, decrease some of the costs because they don't necessarily have to be in person for, for the training, but they need to provide much more, so, for instance, um, we have weekly sessions that take place for students and then weekly sessions that are taking place, weekly planning sessions that are taking place with teachers, they didn't, um, originally, they didn't think that they would have to do as much in terms of the weekly planning sessions with the teachers.
So the training is different?
Yes, and so there are some additional trainings that they're putting in because the goal is to have more teachers, um, to have more teachers that are fully trained in the process throughout the course of the year.
So they've been doing consulting for the teachers in the district, right, and development, so that is like a line item of $10,000 in the new one. Right, and that's 100 hours at $100 an hour. They had those two combined in the first contract and it was development 108 hours for 60 hours, $60 an hour and consulting 52 hours, so it was 160 hours of development consulting, but that was both at $60 an hour. Is that the same development and consulting as, oh, my computer just went out, as the develop, as the development and consulting that's combined for $100 at $100 per hour?
It's, it is and it isn't, um, some of the training that they're doing now is more intensive, even though they don't have to, it may not be as many hours as it was in the original contract, but it's much more intensive. And then, and then they've had to bring in, um, a third person, a third consultant into the training as well to try to, to make sure that they are able to meet the needs of all of the teachers.
So they went through 160 hours of development and consulting and they're asking for another 100 hours of consulting and development?
No.
Huh?
Instead of, yes, it's instead of.
Oh, in lieu of?
Yes.
Those are memorandum of understandings, so we haven't paid for that, it's just what the proposal is, so we wanted to come forward with the updated one.
And that was my second question, is, is this, is, they're giving us a price if we utilize all this, but is it based upon service and?
It is.
Okay, yes.
So all of it has taken place, has it been?
Yes. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And in favor, it passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion to adjourn? Flora?
Anthony, second.
Anthony, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to zero. Thanks, have a great day, everyone.